I hereby call this meeting of the King George County Board of Supervisors to order. The following members are participating through electronic and remote means pursuant to the rules previously adopted by this board. Ms. Bender?
Kathy Bender, participating remotely due to illness.
Thank you, Ms. Bender. I direct the clerk to include this statement and any statement of remotely participating board members to be memorialized in the minutes. Mr. Miller, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
No, we do not.
Thank you. Public comment. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. If comments relate to a specific public hearing item, and we do have two of those advertised for this evening, we ask that you offer those comments at the time of the public hearing. I have a sign-in sheet that I'll start with that first. Mr. Don Shelton? And again, please state your name and address.
Don Shelton, 9430 Ashburn Court. I just want to share this piece of information with you guys. In June of this year, Tappahannock government voted six to nothing to keep their confetti memorial in front of their courthouse. This is an article on it. If you'd like to have a copy of it, I'll give it to you. You don't want a copy? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
So, Mr. Shelton, if you would like to approach, you could, you, oh, you have already provided it to Mr. Miller?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you then.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do not have any other names on the sign-up sheet, but if there is anyone else present in the boardroom who wishes to speak before I move on to online public comment, please come forward.
My apologies if I'm not at the right time. This is having to do with the cell tower.
No, sir. So, right now is general public comment for matter, any matter other than the two advertised public hearings. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, Mr. Dines, do we have anyone online for public comment? Very good. Members, did anyone receive any correspondence, a citizen wished to be read for public comment? No? Ms. Bender, did you have any correspondence?
No, ma'am.
Very good then. I will now close public comment. We will move on to reports of members of the board. Ms. Bender, I'll go ahead and let you go first.
I'll try to be brief so my voice can hold out. I just want to invite the public on September 22nd at the Smoot Library at 6:00 PM. I invited Ms. Cupka to join me for a Shiloh Town Hall discussing Route 3. And I thank you to all the staff that has agreed to participate. So, just mark your calendars and that is all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bender. Mr. Granger?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. Shelton, thank you for coming, providing your comment. Ms. Bender as well, thank you for still attending and being dedicated to attend even though you're ill and not coming in to infect anyone as well. So, we appreciate that as well, but your dedication. So, thank you for that. Other than that, on August, Tuesday, August 10th, I attended a commerall meeting at Indianhead. Probably the most interesting thing was from the Office of Research and Technology Applications Lead at NSWC Indianhead Division talked about their Naval Energetics Technologies Other Transaction Authority, OTA program brief, which was talking about how to find another way to fund contracts that were not using the FAR-based contracting method, which is a fairly lengthy process to get contracts out. And so, they have a partnership with the National Armaments Consortium, which approximately has about 950 members, and my understanding is like a $500 annual fee. And so, it allows them to work with these companies in particular for developing prototypes, and it's only for prototypes. And it allows them to get 12-week turnarounds on their contracts from like start to finish and actually funding it. It's up to 500 million, is my understanding. So, I, the reason I bring it up is for anyone in the community who might have a business that is interested in maybe looking into the National Armaments Consortium, seeing if that would make sense, just trying to share that information because it seemed like a good program to help speed along things and get rid of some of the bureaucracy, so. And if you wanted to, feel free to reach out to me and I could try to make connection with that POC at Indianhead. I'm sure he could help provide information as well. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Granger. Mr. Stonehill?
Hello all. Mr. Shelton, thank you for coming out and sharing your comment. I appreciate when everybody comes out and speaks. All I have, August 4th, myself and Mrs. Cupka attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony for a new contractor's office down in Dahlgren called Simventions. This is, I think, their third satellite office that they have, and they've opened up here in King George in one of their buildings, and they just moved into a 2,500 square foot office. And they're also bringing about 25 positions to King George, which is great for the Dahlgren community. They are a government contractor, and they're great support for our military, men and women, and for NSF Dahlgren as well. And so, we welcome them, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Stonehill. Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tomorrow morning, I will be attending the first responders appreciation breakfast. So, I'd like to thank my colleagues for putting me up to represent the board. I'm really looking forward to that event. I had a constituent reach out to me who had some concerns about one of my affiliations. Even though I had put it out on social media, I wanted to make it public because they felt it wasn't made public record and that the public has a right to know, even though I have been very public and vocal about it. I just want to make this board and the public aware that yes, I am, or I have been elected and am serving as the chairman of the King George County Republican Committee. So, I just wanted to put that on the record because there were concerns about that. So, now that could be part of the official record that's out there. And Madam Chair, that will conclude my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bush. I want to thank everyone for coming out for public comment tonight. Last night, I attended the FAMPO monthly meeting. I want to let my colleagues know Smart Scale is coming up fast, a lot sooner than it normally does. Normally, over the winter, we typically talk about what projects we want staff to submit pre-applications for. They're talking like next month. Yeah. So, and I know Mr. Miller is already tracking this and working with economic development staff to try to come up with a streamlined list of suggested projects for us. So, we probably will need to entertain that at the first meeting in September. Thank you. This Saturday, August 21st, I'll have, see you in the Stacks office hours at Smoot Library from 10:00 AM to noon in the café. Stop by if you would like to chat with me about your cares and concerns for our community. And I want to thank Representative Rob Whitman's office for their assistance when I contacted them last week on behalf of a constituent regarding an American citizen attempting to secure passage from Afghanistan. I greatly appreciate the assistance from his office. And that is all I have for my report. We will go ahead and move on to the consent agenda.
Move to the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Ms. Bender?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. All right then. County officials reports. We do have Sheriff Giles present today. Constitutional officers, do you have anything you wish to bring to the board, sir? Thank you, sir. And I see also that Ms. Hart, our Commissioner of the Revenue, is present. Do you have anything you wish to bring to us during this time? Thank you. And I think that's it for constitutional officers. Very good. All right then. Report of the county attorney, Mr. Golsky.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I'd like to, last month, or actually last meeting, a redistricting committee was appointed by this board, and it was noticed that Louis Pancotti, Senior Planner with King George, was not on that roster. And would it be appropriate to add, if the board so chooses?
I move to appoint Senior Planner Louis Pancotti to the redistricting committee.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Golsky. Continue.
The next item is, it actually comes through Ms. Hart out of the Commissioner of Revenue's office. It's a text amendment to the cigarette tax that the county recently adopted. It has come to her attention through a couple months of application that the vendors are unable to, or having difficulties meeting the fifth of the month date that is set forth for their reports and for their reporting and their, the previous month's sales. And they are requesting that it be moved to the 20th of the month, which is consistent with the Commonwealth's due date. And the Commonwealth does allow anywhere from the first of the month to the 20th of the month for those reports to be submitted. So, this really is, it doesn't change anything, and it's just being submitted for, at this point, for whether it should be advertised. It's a text amendment, changing from the fifth to the 20th. It would be advertised for two weeks, and we have a discussion with Mr. Miller, slating it for the 21st of September meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Golsky. Mr. Stonehill, you were our appointee to the cigarette tax committee, so I'll defer to you. Would you have anything you care to add?
That, I think you said that that was the same time that they had to report to the state is correct, so that they were going to do, the wholesalers were going to do both to the local government and the state at the same time?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Bush? Ms. Bender, do you have any questions for Mr. Golsky regarding the request?
No, I do not.
Very good then. Mr. Golsky, do we have to have a formal vote, or does it suffice that you have consensus? Should we, do I need someone to move? I need someone to move. You have the motions? Very good.
I move to authorize county staff to advertise the proposed text amendment to the King George County Cigarette Tax Ordinance, Section 14-207 as presented, to be set for public hearing in consideration at the September 21st, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Golsky?
That is all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. All right. Moving right along, 0811, Board Commission Agency Reports and Public Hearings, case number 21-02-e01. It has come to my attention that the applicant's submission in this matter placed on the agenda for public hearing this evening has been significantly revised and amended since a recommendation was made by the Planning Commission. Based on that and other factors, I will entertain a motion for closed session.
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors convene in a closed meeting pursuant to VA Code Section 2.2-3711A8, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Laminarily discussions related to the holding of public hearings on telecommunication facility matters. I invite the county administrator, county attorney, deputy county attorney, zoning administrator, and Louis Pancotti, Senior Planner, because they are deemed necessary and/or their presence will be reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to VA Code Section 2.2-3712F.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries. We are in closed session.
Ms. Bender, are you back online?
I'm back.
Thank you. Mr. Dines. Do we have a motion?
I move that the King George County Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open public requirements by Virginia law, and only such public business matters as was identified in the motion convening the closed meetings were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, I need one by one so certify.
I so certify.
So certify.
I certify.
Ms. Bender.
So certify. So certify.
And the chair so certifies, we are in open session. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that case number 2102E01, the special exception permit request be remanded back to the Planning Commission to have an opportunity to consider the material and substantial changes made to the application. Since the Planning Commission's recommendation, which obviates the need for a public hearing at this time, such remand will be for the Planning Commission to consider the substantial and material changes and may or may not, at their discretion, have a public hearing and further provide a recommendation to the board who will hold a public hearing at a further date.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries. This matter has been remanded to the Planning Commission. We will now move on to the next item on the agenda. Public hearing, case number 21, actually folks are... So, sir? So folks, if you would care to have a discussion, you can do so outside. Otherwise, we're going to continue on with the meeting. You may leave, yes, you are... You may leave. Anyone will give you a minute. Anyone who would like to leave, please go ahead and do so, and then we'll resume the meeting. All right then. Moving on to the public hearing, case number 21-04-Z01. Amendment to Section 4.16 Solar Farm of the King George County Zoning Ordinance to require a surety equal to the cost of decommissioning and to require all cleaning agents be biodegradable. Amendments to Section 4.16. The King George County Board of Supervisors will now hold a public hearing that has been properly advertised to receive input, receive public input regarding case number 21-04-Z01. Amendment to Section 4.16 Solar Farm of the King George County Zoning Ordinance to require a surety equal to the cost of decommissioning and to require all cleaning agents be biodegradable. Amendments to Section 4.16. I will first ask for the staff report. I will then open the floor for public comment. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. Please state your name and address before you comment. Upon completion of public comment, I will bring the matter back to the board for consideration. The board may or may not take action tonight depending on information received during public comment. And Mr. Louis Pankati is here on behalf of the Department of Community Development. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Greetings, Madam Chair, members of the Board of Supervisors. I am Louis Pankati, Senior Planner, and I will be presenting case number 21-04-Z01. So this text amendment came about the request of the Planning Commission. The solar farm regulations were discussed at the March, April, and May Planning Commission meetings before the Commission voted to recommend approval of this text amendment to the Board of Supervisors. The purpose of the text amendment is to require a surety or bond for the decommissioning of a solar facility and to require that all agents and solutions for the cleaning of solar panels on a solar farm be biodegradable. So just as a reminder, this map shows the areas in the county where the use of a solar farm is permitted by special exception. That would be the green areas, the A1 and A2 zoning districts. And the purple is the industrial district where it is permitted by right. All solar farms, regardless of what zoning district they are, must meet the regulations set forth in Section 4.16 of the zoning ordinance. The Planning Commission looked at the economic, tax, and legislative impact of solar farms. A simple economic analysis showed that during the construction phase, a 20 to 50 watt... A simple economic analysis showed that during the construction phase, a 20 to 50 watt mega or megawatt facility would have an economic output of $6 million, and an economic output of $2.8 during the operation phase. An estimate of the tax benefit showed that a 25 megawatt facility would generate approximately $119, $900 per year in tax revenue, and that's based on the 2020 real estate tax rate. The Planning Commission also looked at some of the state legislation. They have several pieces of legislation that affect solar farms and the regulations thereof. 15.2-2288.7 establishes how a locality can regulate facilities. In most zoning districts, solar facilities that serve just one property in which they're located shall be permitted by right. Any solar facility that is designed to serve or serve the electricity or thermal needs of any property other than the property where the facilities are located, however, shall be subject to the applicable zoning regulations of the locality, such as a special exception. 15.1-3661 grants locality the authorization to exempt certain solar energy equipment from taxation, and ordinance would need to be adopted for the locality to implement this exception. And 6-585.13 establishes the community solar pilot program, defined as an eligible solar program conducted by a participating utility pursuant to this section following approval of the Commission, under which the participating utility sells electrical power to subscribing customers under a voluntary companion rate schedule, and participating utility generates or purchases electrical power from the participating generation facilities selected by the participating utility. Investor-owned utilities are authorized to issue RFPs for solar projects meeting these program criteria. The Planning Commission also reviewed the ordinances of Swatlavenia, Halifax, Surrey, and Gloucester, all of which did have provisions for decommissioning, including a requirement for bonding. The Commission also reviewed a study conducted by Sol Uniseco of Virginia counties, and how their ordinances address the decommissioning of solar farms. Recommendations of the study included requiring a bond and to have it reevaluated every five years. So Section 4.16 outlines the regulations for solar farms, and 4.16.3 goes... Has about 10 different regulations that all solar farms must meet. This text amendment will amend requirement G by... And it will now read, "A decommissioning plan. A detailed decommissioning plan that provides procedures and requirements for removal of all parts of the solar facility generation or facility and its various structures at the end of the useful life of this facility shall be provided. It is a responsibility of the parcel owner to remove all abandoned systems within 12 months of succession of operations. Reusable components are to be recycled whenever economically feasible. A surety equivalent to the cost of removal of the solar farm prior to the approval of the final site plan shall be provided. The decommissioning surety shall be reevaluated not less than every five years by a certified engineer. The reevaluation shall be submitted to the Department of Community Development for review and approval. Decommissioning surety amount shall be updated as needed based on the reevaluation." Also, subsection M will be added and state that any cleaning products used on the solar farm must be biodegradable. At the Planning Commission meeting, the Commission voted unanimously seven to zero to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors, so therefore, Community Development staff and the Planning Commission recommend that the Board of Supervisors approve case number 21-04-Z01, amendment to Section 4.16 Solar Farm of the King George County Zoning Ordinance to require a surety to be equal to the cost of decommissioning, and to require all cleaning project products be biodegradable. Amendments to Section 4.16. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Members, questions only at this time? Any questions of staff? Mr. Stonehill?
I have a question.
Okay, just a moment, Ms. Bender. Mr. Bush here has a question. Go ahead, Mr. Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Louis, in the language, you were talking about a surety. Is that an actual bond that's taken out, or is that just an evaluation of what the cost would be to decommission the facility? I ask because, like, if we get to a point where something needs to be removed, or when it gets done, do we physically have funds that if the company or the owner of the solar farm walks away, do we have securities in place that we can take care of cleaning the property without cost to the taxpayer? So is the... So question, I'm sorry. Is the surety a physical bond that is taken out and reevaluated and renewed every five years, or is it a cost estimate that's evaluated just for records every five years?
So it may not be a bond, per se. It could be a bond. It's more of a blanket term. There's other ways to post, but it will be something that would be binding. There's other forms of sureties.
Mr. Golsky, could you please weigh in, because it is a legal term?
Yes, it would be a bond or a letter of credit. So it would be secured.
Okay.
And actually, while I'm doing this...
Please.
On the amended text, we do need to have actually added the state code reference to 15.2-2241.2 as a footnote. That can be done further, but it's on the record.
When, yes, when we get to the point where we're entertaining a motion. All right. Ms. Bender, I believe, Mr. Bush, you have a satisfactory answer to your question, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Bender, you had a question, I believe?
Yes, my question was in the decommissioning, since there hasn't been a lot of solar farms that have been around for 30 years, about the lifespan, 30, 40 years, and you mentioned the decommissioning. What is our assurance that if it is found that the materials are quite hazardous, that they will dispose of properly, and the county does not hold any liability for that?
So that sounds to me like another legal question, Mr. Golsky?
Yes, again, the state code reference that's just added allows for a bond or other surety to be added in order to achieve that decommissioning.
Right, thank you. My second question is about a fire. You know, our fire EMS is that to make sure that there's a site plan for, you know, it mentioned in it that a fire EMS would have access to the site in case there was a fire or something, but will they be given a site plan so they know where to go if there was a fire?
Go ahead.
Yes, a site plan, we do send that to the fires rescue services for review prior to approval.
And, Ms. Bender, that's something I specifically asked of Chief Moody when we had the adoption of the battery ordinance as well, so we are definitely tracking that concern. Do you have any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
Is that it, Ms. Bender?
Yes.
Very good, then. All right, I will... I do not have any questions. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Madam Chair, could I just add one more thing, just for clarification, that the state code reference allows for the bond and surety, but it also requires a detailed decommissioning plan?
Excellent, thank you. All right, I will now open the floor for public comment. Public comment, again, is limited to three minutes per speaker in order to afford everyone an opportunity to speak. Please state your name and address before you comment. I do not have anyone who signed up in advance for this public hearing. Is there anyone present in the boardroom who wishes to speak? You may do so now, please come forward. Alrighty then. Is anyone online, Mr. Dines, to speak about the text amendment? And have we received either from members of the Board of Supervisors, or from county administration, or community development staff, have we received any written statements with regard to this public hearing? All right then, I will now close the public hearing, and I will open it up for the will of the Board.
Mr. Golsky, could you please detail through, you said there need to be a modification?
Yes, at the end of the text amendment, it needs to be added that the state code reference, 15.2-2241.2, and then there will be the ability to use that, the requirement for a detailed decommissioning plan and surety requirement.
And since that is not a material difference, we can make that change?
That is correct. It is just a reference to our authority to do so.
Thank you. In that case, I'd like to make a motion to approve case number 21-Tax04-TaxZ01, amendment to Section 4.16 Solar Farm of the King George County Zoning Ordinance to require a surety equal to the cost of decommissioning, and to require all cleaning agents to be biodegradable. Amendments to Section 4.16 with the modification as detailed by Mr. Golsky.
Second.
Any further discussion? I'll go down the line, Mr. Granger.
No, ma'am.
Mr. Stonehill?
No.
Mr. Bush? Ms. Bender, do you have anything to add for discussion?
No.
All right then, we have a motion properly seconded. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Community Development staff, for your presentations and your patience this evening. All right, we will move on to action item 08-13, Department of Parks and Recreation, request to approve temporary use of 3321 Roseland Road. Mr. Chris Clark, Director of King George County Parks and Recreation, is here this evening. Welcome, Mr. Clark.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I come tonight seeking your approval for the temporary use of county-owned property located at 3321 Roseland Road. 3321 Roseland Road was acquired by King George County in 2019 as part of the... Excuse me, as part of the Harry Nice Thomas Mack Middleton Route 301 Bridge Project. It is a three-bedroom home that currently sits vacant, awaiting future plans and funding to convert it to a commercial structure for Parks and Recreation use. Recently, we have been approached with the idea of using the home as temporary living quarters for new executive-level employees of King George County and our related governmental units. We propose allowing two, up to two employees to rent the home from Parks and Recreation on a limited month-to-month basis, with a maximum stay of six months unless otherwise approved by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. One employee would have the master suite on the second floor, and the other would use the bedrooms in full bath on the south side of the home. All other areas of the home would be a shared space between the two renters. This rental would be for employees only, and weekend guests such as spouses would be welcome, but not as continuous residents. The county would provide basic utilities, electric, water, and septic, as well as all outdoor and major maintenance to the home. The renter would be responsible for housekeeping and removal of trash. We would not install phone, internet, or television service due to the limited rental periods. No furniture would be provided by the county. The fee per renter would be $600 per month, $500 to the Recreation Activity Fund, and $100 to the General Fund for Utilities Maintenance. Parks and Recreation would work with Finance and the Treasurer's Office to transfer the revenues to the appropriate funds, only one check would need to be written per month. Just to show, so the master suite is the right picture of the second floor, and then the far, the center of the picture is the two bedrooms. There's a pocket door that separates those two bedrooms and that bathroom from the remainder of the house, which would give that renter a little more privacy. Tonight, staff recommends that the Board of Supervisors authorize the Director of Parks and Recreation and the County Attorney to develop a short-term lease agreement for King George County staff for the month-to-month rental of 3321 Roseland Road as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. I will start with Mr. Stonehill, because this is in your district, so I will defer to you, sir. Do you have questions for Mr. Clark to lead it off, sir?
Just sitting, and they're empty right now, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. No, no questions besides that?
Thank you. Mr. Granger, do you have anything to ask?
So I assume this would be, this is the plan, since it is empty at the moment, to say, let's find a use for it, at least to do something with it. And I assume it could change at any point. Like, if you came back and now we have money and a plan, we're like, all right, well, that's, this is done with, and we... How would that work then with ending, you know, if you have a lease and with someone? Do you have to wait it out then?
Well, it would be, the lease would be set, I'm sure, when I worked with Mr. Britton, it would be set as month-to-month, so we provided...
So it's only a month worth, then? That we have to, okay, fair enough.
You've got, yeah, there'll be some, there'll be an out clause for us.
Yeah.
And being only six months total, at this time, we, there's a couple of employees that we've identified who may be interested, so my guess is they would be in maybe September 1st, so we look and...
Tracking, and I know that we're not, we don't have a plan for it at the moment with funds that we can allocate to doing something at the moment, so, okay, yeah.
All right, Mr. Bush?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chris, thank you for bringing this before us tonight. I think it's a good, solid plan, currently sitting vacant, you know. Things that sit around tend to decay, so I like this plan. It's bringing in revenues, providing a service, but what I don't want us to do is get complacent, and get to the point to where, okay, we're just renting it out month-to-month, we'll always have somebody in it, and four years down the road, well, that's the county's rental property. I don't want that to be the plan. I still want to move forward with looking, you know, once the bridge is done and we have a plan for the wayside area, how is this going to play into it? So I still want us to trudge forward with...
Do you have a question, Mr. Bush?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for your...
Yeah, so we don't have a motion, so you're getting into discussion if we're...
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bender, do you have any questions for staff?
No, I do not have any questions. I just have a comment when it comes to discussion.
Very good, then. All right, is there a motion?
I move to approve the staff recommendation to allow Parks and Recreation to enter short-term leases with executive staff members for the Roseland Rose property as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Bush, go ahead.
Thank you. Now, to get to the end, to my, what my point was, are we still moving forward with the plan and how this is going to fit into wayside when the bridge is done?
So last week, it feels like longer than that, we presented capital improvement plan to the Planning Commission. The Roseland House itself did not make Parks and Recreation's top 10, and we could only submit 10 projects, so it sits currently at our 12th item. So it is on the radar, but has not made it to the actual plan. It's something that needs to be addressed going forward. A opportunity for master planning the entire complex is part of our CIP process. We had separated out that two-acre home site versus the Wayside Barnfield and New Barnfield properties, but yes, it is something that's on the plan, but it doesn't fall. We did a survey of the public, and between the public and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee, the house itself and the museum plan did not score high enough to make it into our plan.
Thank you, but I still don't want to concede the fact that it's going to be a museum. I still don't concede that fact, just for the record, but thank you very much.
Anyone else? Ms. Bender?
Yes, I would like...
Discussion, go ahead.
I do not agree with Mr. Bush on that one about the museum, but one of the things is I do appreciate Mr. Clark and your staff and the Parks and Rec Advisory Board coming in and giving a plan. I know I had promised many times the residents of Roseland Road that we would make sure we upkept the property and not let it fall to disrepair, so having at least someone in there that could make sure that the property is well-maintained and taken care of is very important to me, and I agree that I would like to make sure that we have this as, this is just a temporary stockage, so until we can figure out that master plan, which sooner rather than later, and plan it out so that we can fund and do the appropriate with the property we obtained in the swap-up plan for the bridge. Thank you very much.
All right. Closing out discussion, yes, Mr. Clark?
Yeah, I forgot to include here, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee did look at this last week at their meeting and did give consensus to bring it forward to the Board.
Very good, thank you. All right, anything else? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Clark. All right, county administrators report. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple items, I don't, I think you may have it, may not. The, a couple things is, is that obviously we are starting to encounter, you know, the, this Delta variant, and I'm telling you right off the bat, I'm not here to talk about mask mandates or anything like that. I will just tell you that what we have done internally is we've kicked off our internal group, which is... group, which is meeting weekly to discuss things that we get from the health agency and to, you know, basically do some discussion and some, some guidance in terms of what we're going to do. I will tell you this, that we are going to probably, we're going to issue a directive to staff in terms of return to work. There are two competing policies, if you will, that the Fire and Rescue has a policy that essentially is symptom, symptom-based and also time-based. The existing policy that the other staff is under is that you've got to test negative twice, and we are finding, obviously, that that's a pretty onerous situation. I think, obviously, back when this was put in place, that was probably a good policy because it was, you know, we were having those kind of situations where, you know, people would test and then they would test again, and it was fine, but we are going to change it to the symptom-based and the, the time-based, so for everybody. We have had some cases in the, in the, among the staff, and they're doing the proper thing. You know, either they actually got it on their own or they got it through spouse or child, and so we are doing the things that we have to do, but we aren't having any significant issues. I tell you this, in terms of active cases in King George, as of yesterday, 53 that are being reported, so think of the population of King George, that's still a very small number. There were no new cases as of yesterday. These are all the, these were the 53 that had, had occurred. The nice thing for us is a positivity rate of 6.5. The Rappahannock Health District's overall positivity rate is 10.2. We are still in a, we're in a substantial level, whereas Spotsylvania County, Stafford, Caroline, and Fredericksburg, and Charles across the river are in the very high category, so things are going in a good direction in that respect. So again, we'll keep you apprised if things have to change. That's the purpose of having the, the interdepartmental team that we're, we've assembled, that if things happen, we want to be able to respond to it very quickly and get all the best consideration of it, so. I will tell you that I also had the opportunity to meet with the base commander, Captain Copeland, had a great briefing with his staff and tour of the facilities, and he does want to come and, and, you know, visit with you all at a future meeting, so we could probably try to arrange to get him on that. You know, when it comes to COVID, they obviously are dealing with a lot of parameters there and a lot of things, moving parts. He has indicated that they're very close to going to what they call DEFCON Charlie, which is the, kind of the, they go to 25%, and Supervisor Granger can talk about that if, if anybody has any questions about that, since he works there, but it is something that, you know, it's a moving target right now, and hopefully we can get everything back down to a kind of a stability phase. I would just remind you that you have scheduled on the 28th of September the, the first CIP work session, and we'll obviously have that information for you. We did have a good meeting last week with the Planning Commission, as, as Chris Clark indicated, and, you know, the next step is they're going to set their public hearing, and then we're waiting, actually, tonight, I guess Heather will get back from them, or today she did, the rankings, and then we'll go to work putting, you know, putting the, the revenues to match the expenditures so that you all can, we can give you the presentation of information and things like that. Also, the 15th, again, is the joint meeting with you all and the Planning Commission and the Berkeley Group, and so that should be an interesting meeting as we jump into re, rechang, or changing the ordinance, the zoning ordinance. The, the one thing I do want to say is that we are going to, we're going to convert a part-time general properties employee to a full-time position for the janitorial services at the Department of Social Services, and the nice thing about what we're doing is we're going to get reimbursed for the Department of Social Services portion from the state, so that'll cover any kind of real significance on that, but it will also allow us to take care of some, some folks in our, the rest of the organization. Chris is operational, Travis is where, where they are, where they're housed. They do their own cleaning right now because we don't have the staff to get over there, and we'll include them in this, and so we'll be able to take care of them and the Department of Social Services. I also would like to ask, and I, I guess it would be a, a motion here in a, in a second, we can withhold this, but Dr. Ann Bush, the Chair of the CPMT, has requested that Michelle Cantrell be appointed to the CPMT as the Health Department Representative, and then we can take it action now or?
So I'll ask for a motion?
Okay.
I move to appoint Ms. Michelle Cantrell to the CPMT as the Health District, Health Department Representative.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, carry on, sir.
Thank you. We also need to reappoint members of the Tourism Advisory Committee. It's my understanding that all the members are up at the end of this month, and I don't know if in your packet we have the people that are interested in participating, continuing to participate. We did receive, we didn't receive some information from a couple people, but there are four that have indicated they're interested in, in continuing to serve. Mr. Baird, DeStrauss, Mr. Vizi, and Jaron Hayes have indicated, and then we had a no response from some of the other folks, so my recommendation as staff would be that you, you make a motion and, and appoint the ones who have said they're interested in continuing. We can come back and get the others if they do something at a later date, but I think you would have a quorum because there's a number of vacancies on there.
Yes, so I'm tracking Baird, Strauss, Vizi, and Hayes wish to be reappointed. All right, is it the will of the board to go ahead and make reappointments this evening? So we at least have some members of the Tourism Committee renewed before their term expires as we will not meet again before August 31st. All right, then, do I have a motion?
I move to reappoint Ms. Jaren Hayes, Mr. Bob Baird, Ms. DeStrauss, and Mr. Warren Vizi to the Tourism Advisory Committee to take effect September 1st, 2021, for a one-year term.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries. And so then, Mr. Miller, could you have staff forward an email to us with the categories of vacancies that remain?
Yes.
As a result of this evening's appointment, and we can do what we can to seek out citizens wishing to serve.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I just have a couple more items. The one is, is you remember, the 11th of, of August was the date that was set for the return of proposals for the, the monument removal. There was one received, and so my recommendation is tonight, obviously that you're not going to do anything, but my recommendation is that we will turn this to you in the form of a, an action item at the 7th of September meeting, and we will, we are going to go through and vet this proposal, but it was one responsible, as Ken said, it's a responsible bidder, and we have to determine if that is the case, and we will go from there.
All right, so September 7th gives staff enough time to make that determination, Mr. Golsky?
Yeah, yes, I do believe that would be enough time, but I just want to clarify that there hasn't been a determination yet that they're a responsive and responsible bidder, but that'll be part of the process that will be going forward.
Correct.
Okay, so we will, yeah, I, I don't know that you want to do anything that would set it for the 7th. Let us, we'll bring it back to a future meeting.
Yep.
And if it takes longer than that, we don't want to set the 7th, so.
All right, anything else, Mr. Miller?
I guess would mention a couple things. One is working, obviously, with the Service Authority folks, getting to know what's going on there, and obviously making sure that all the, the things are in place to continue operations. Gave an update to the Board of Directors as a Service Authority about the various contractors that we're meeting with, the engineers that we're meeting with, and also with the staff to ensure that there's a continuity of, of operations. They also prepared, there is a CIP draft that, that I have that I'm going to present to the Board of Directors. It's my recommendation from, to them, or it will be my recommendation to them, that they forward it to you, let you have a look at it. Technically, they have the authority to approve it. It would be probably good that it be part of the county's overall CIP, and it, you know, obviously is funded differently, but I do think that that keeps that information flow going, so that's something that we'll be working with them on, and then we will provide to you guys just as a, a matter of information. It's my understanding that it's not formally approved by the county supervisors.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, and I appreciate that, and I'm sure my colleagues on this board appreciate having that information made available to them as well. Okay, questions from members for Mr. Miller regarding his report? Mr. Granger?
No questions on the report. I do have one question aside from that, if it, if you'll entertain me. So I was just looking through the board packet, and it's still showing that there's three vacancies in the Board of Zoning Appeals. I know we currently have at least a quorum. I know two recommendations were made, one for myself and then one for the Shiloh District. Do we know the status of that? Do we know if those-
I need to check with that, and unfortunately, Ms. Ms. Hall is not here, but I will find out where, where we are on that and get that back to y'all.
I appreciate it, thank you. Those are all I-
All right, thank you, Mr. Granger. Mr. Stonehill?
No questions.
All right, Mr. Bush? Ms. Bender?
Nothing.
All right, I don't have any questions. Thank you very much for your report, Mr. Miller. And with that, I do believe I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Seven.
I move to adjourn until September 7th at 6:30 PM in the boardroom.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned to the next regularly scheduled meeting on September 7, 2021 at 6:30 PM in the boardroom. That meeting may be held by electronic means and/or remote participation only and may be closed to the public being physically present. All citizens are encouraged to participate in advance or during the meeting by electronic means as provided by the county. We are adjourned.
This is a cumulative motion.